Good, so we've been talking about, in the broader sense, we've been talking about why it's important to study the Word of God, how to go about it. And last week, we saw that in order to properly benefit from the Word of God, we need a stepwise approach. We shouldn't just read the Word of God, we need to study it. And we noted that we can't just go from reading a passage in the Bible to applying that passage to our lives. We noted that if we do that, it can really, well, one, we may not benefit, but two, we may actually misapply Scripture. Let me go into PowerPoint mode. So we may actually end up misapplying Scripture. So what we want to do is to use a stepwise approach, to be meticulous, make sure that we're doing a good job. And that way, we'll be able to benefit from the Word of God. See, one thing I've discovered about the Word of God is it's in many respects a legal document. It's a historical document. This document has led many archaeologists to make great findings in the Middle East, for example, and to be able to interpret their findings. Without the Bible, they would not have been able to do so. In the same way, this Bible, this same Bible, provides us with other other forms of guidance. It's a legal document. Why is it a legal document? Because the word of the King is law. The word that proceeds out of God's mouth will not return to him void. It has the precision of a legal document, and it has the power of a legal document. And any lawyer will tell you that you are not at liberty to interpret the law the way you like. There is a meaning behind every law, every legislative instrument that is put in place. And the highest form of law that ever came into existence is God's Word. So if even human laws are not interpreted with liberty, how on earth can we approach the Word of God that way? How on earth can we just take this verse and say, oh, I believe this is what he's saying to me? Years ago, I used to come across Christians that were were quite disillusioned with God, disappointed with him. And I myself was disappointed with him at some point. Do you know why? Because I opened the book of Proverbs, I opened some passages, and I saw some promises. And I thought, I'm going to believe in these promises. The Lord is going to fulfill his word. He's faithful. And then the things I was believing for didn't happen. Can you imagine how disappointed I was? How bitter? You know, maybe I didn't become bitter, but for briefly, I could have become bitter. The temptation was there. Thankfully, you know, that didn't happen to me. But I know a lot of people that's happened to. I've come across people. People that were expecting a miracle. You know, years ago, I met someone who was expecting their husband to be healed. He was ill, and he was expecting him to be healed. And they said that the Lord had failed them because he passed away. You know, that the Word of God wasn't true, or that God hadn't come true. That forced me to dig deeper. Because the Bible says it's impossible for God to lie. Now, if it's impossible for God to lie, and he says something, and I believe in it, and it doesn't come to pass, what's going on here? Do I get angry with him and conclude that he's lied? Or do I say to myself, no, he cannot lie? So something, there must be something wrong somewhere. But it cannot be that God failed. It cannot be that God lied. It cannot be that God went back on his word. It must be somewhere else. Maybe I'm not believing as I ought to, or maybe I have misinterpreted his word. Maybe I have concluded that he made a promise that he didn't make. Every now and again, I hear a knock on my door. I go and open the door, and what do I find? A delivery man carrying a pizza, and he says, did you order this pizza? I said, no, I didn't order a pizza. And then he said, who ordered it then? And then he later on finds that he got the wrong address. Because I didn't order the pizza, he couldn't force me to pay for it. He had to go and find whoever ordered it. You see, if God hasn't said something, you can't force him to fulfill it. He will only, the Bible says, he watches over his word to fulfill it. So it's what he has said, that's what he watches over. What he hasn't said, nothing to do with him. In fact, Jesus himself promised, he said, in the last days, there will be many prophets. They will say things in my name. But don't believe them. Don't believe them, and God won't fulfill what those ones say. In the same way, if we take the Word of God and misread it and misapply it, we can't force God to fulfill our wrong interpretation of Scripture. That's why interpreting Scripture is such an important thing. So we said that there's a stepwise approach here. First, we must read the Word of God. We must listen to it. We must spend time with the Word, not be in a hurry. You know, it's good to have a devotion now. It's good to read a devotion now. But the devotion, you cannot substitute your Bible study for, you know, that 30-minute, 10-minute, 5-minute devotion now that you do, you read in the morning. No, you need to set aside time to actually read the Word of God. To actually listen. If you like audio Bible like I do, listen to the Word of God over and over and over again. This is not just about memorization. You can memorize Scripture and still miss it. There are many passages that I had memorized, but I couldn't get beyond the memorization. I just remembered that I could recite it, but that's all I could do with it. We need more than that. Well, sometimes I just want the Word of God to play in the background. I'm not even paying attention to it. I just want it to be in the background. Why? Because when it's like that, you lose your guard. When you lose your guard, words slip in. It's the reason why they say it's dangerous sometimes to be watching the wrong things on television. You know, or to let the wrong things play on television whilst you are just sitting there passively. Something will slip in. Well, and what's the other way? If you let the Word of God play in the background, even though you are not actively listening, something will slip in. And sometimes, those are the nuggets that you are looking for. A word that you always skipped, or you'd always missed, will suddenly begin to make sense to you. So reading, listening, reading with intent, listening with intent, or just listening casually. Then we said interpretation, and that's the bit that we're going to be focusing on today. Where we take our time to discern what the text is saying to us. Then we said the next stage is illumination. This is when the Holy Spirit comes and sheds light on the meaning, and the Scripture we've read many times already suddenly begins to make sense to us. Suddenly begins to minister to us. That's the work of the Holy Spirit. And then we come to application. Application is the last stage. You don't skip any of these three to get to this. You must go through this to get to this. Meanwhile, I don't know about you, but all through my Christian life, up until some, maybe quite a few years ago, I used to just go from read, reading to application. I see a promise, I try to claim that promise. I see an instruction, I try to obey it instantly. And then I noticed something. I was being tossed with the wind. Because I go to church, they'll say one thing, I try to apply it. Then I come home, I'm reading the Bible privately, and then I see something else, I try to apply. Then I started noticing contradictions. Contradictions. So I'd been tossed with the wind, left, right, and no stability. Until around, I think it was 1994, maybe 93, 94, I felt the Lord minister to me very powerfully with Isaiah chapter 54. He says, you who are tossed with the wind, you will establish your foundation. And I could sense that the Lord was talking about. He would establish me so that I will not be tossed with every wind of doctrine. But I didn't really know how that was going to happen. Until time came when I saw the Lord's hand, where he was directing me to spend time studying the Word. There were some sermons that I listened back to back, at least, maybe 100 times, easily. Because within the same day, I could listen to it four, five times. Back to back, lay down the foundation. I was not thinking about application. I was not thinking about jumping to fulfill anything, to obey anything. Just trying to understand the Word. After a while, I saw the foundation be laid. So that if somebody else came with a contradictory doctrine, I just looked at them like that, and it didn't affect me. My position was solid. It wasn't like I could go to a Christian meeting or a church gathering and suddenly hear something contradictory, and then that shakes me, no. I now had a foundation. That is so important. These three steps are supposed to help lay down the foundation so that you can go from there to application. That's when you apply things without being moved. That's how you don't change your definition when the circumstances change. You know what? Our churches these days talk about nothing else but giving. Give, 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 give. And people give in our churches. But in many cases, what I've seen is they've gone from hearing something, applying it. They don't have a solid biblical doctrine upon which they're basing their giving. That's why their giving is inconsistent. What do I mean by consistent? It's like the giving of the Levite and the priest who saw the man, the Jewish man lying down, who had been beaten, robbed, and left for dead. And they saw the man, and they crossed the road to the other side because they were on their way to church to give. They were on their way to church to give, so they stepped over the near-death body of a man. They didn't see an opportunity to give there. Because their giving, it was from here to here. When you have understood the mind of God in giving, why he wants you to give in the first place, what is to be gained from it, the process, then you don't need anybody to massage you with a sermon. You don't need anybody to preach about giving to you. You don't need anybody to threaten you with Malachi chapter 3. You give because you know the mind of your Father, and you know you are a steward, and you know that everything you have, it is to bless the kingdom of God with. Yes, you will benefit. Yes, your family will benefit. But you see yourself as an agent through whom God blesses others. That's how you share in God's nature. The Bible says in 2 Peter, chapter 1, that we may be partakers of the divine nature, having escaped the corruption that is in the world through lust. The divine nature, which involves giving, when you've understood your Father's purpose in giving, you don't need anybody to threaten you with your going to hell if you don't give. You partner with God to give. So that's the purpose of doing this meticulous Bible study, taking a meticulous approach to Bible study. Okay. When we are trying to interpret Scripture, we need to analyze the text to discern its intended meaning. That's really what we want to do. But there's a process to follow. We must know the context. We must discern things like writer, or if it's a speaker, if it's a reporter dialogue, we must understand the speaker-audience dynamics. Let's say John, chapter 6. Jesus is talking to the crowds that came looking for him after he had fed the 5,000. They came to him, they were excited about the opportunity to eat. And when you read, you don't just think about it. Put yourself in Jesus's shoes, or put yourself in the shoes of one of the people present. And then try to picture what's going on. Look at the dynamics. It's only then you begin to understand Jesus's choice of words there. Sometimes when we are trying to interpret Scripture, what must we do? We must look at the language. So I don't know about you, but I never studied Greek. I never studied Hebrew. But you don't have to know Greek or Hebrew to be able to interpret the Bible correctly. Fortunately, you've got many online resources. Pardon me, many online resources. And that's, I've taken us to that website before, BibleStudyTools.com, where you can access the interlinear Bible. There's another website, Bible Hub, they also have the interlinear Bible. And with the interlinear Bible, every word is hyperlinked. So when you click on the word, it will take you to its Greek or Hebrew meaning. So you'll find exactly what each word means, and sometimes it is necessary to do that because the same Greek word may mean four, five different things in English. And the translators had to decide which one to choose. But they didn't always agree. So that's why you have different versions of the Bible, where this one uses that word, and another one uses that. But when you go and check the Hebrew or the Greek, you'll discover, okay. And then you pray for the Holy Spirit's guidance, and you see the Lord taking you to his intent, what he meant when he said what he said. We can know God's intent. Why? Because he lives in us. And by his Spirit, he's able to enlighten us to be able to get to the proper interpretation of Scripture. That's why we said last week that it's not possible to interpret Scripture correctly without the help of the Holy Spirit. The Holy Spirit has to be there with us. He was there, he is the one who inspired those who wrote the Scriptures, and he's here to help us interpret it. Of course, cross-reference, the Bible interprets itself. So if the Bible, in Genesis, chapter 2, chapter 3, rather, chapter 3, tells you about the serpent deceiving Adam and Eve, well, that's not the end of that serpent. If you're looking for his identity, you're looking for, and you're thinking, how can a serpent talk? What kind of serpent is this? That serpent, it later explained. Even in Paul's letter to Corinthians, second letter to Corinthians, he talks about the devil and how he deceived Eve. Suddenly, you discover that the serpent is referring to in Genesis is the devil. Then you get to Revelation, you discover the serpent is there again. So then you understand, okay, the Bible interprets itself. You read something you don't understand, pray for God to guide you to other passages in the Bible that will explain that passage for you. And these days, there are many wonderful online resources that you can use. You can use any of the large language models, you know, the AI platforms, ChatGPT, DeepSeek, Grok. You can use these to help you do a good Bible study. You can literally go and type a question and say, where else in the Bible is this found? And it'll find it for you. It's better than Google because it will give you the exact answer. Google will give you many, many options to choose from. Whereas ChatGPT will take you to the answer you are looking for. Contextual reading. So when you're reading the Bible, if you come across a verse, say, John 3:16, "For God so loved the world that he gave his only begotten son, that whatsoever believers in him shall not perish but have everlasting life." You need to read the context. Where were those words uttered or spoken? What was the context? What was going on? Who said it? Whom did he say it to? What necessitated those words? And to be able to answer all those questions, you need to go and read the wider context. Read the immediate context, the immediate verses preceding, immediate verses following, to try and get what's going on. But sometimes you need to read even wider. So in the case of John 3:16, you might say, okay, let me read the whole of chapter 3 of John to be able to understand. But some other passages, you might need to go a little bit further. You might need to read two chapters earlier to get the context better. So it's so important. Sometimes you need to understand the author's intent in writing a book. So in John's Gospel, John writes, "And truly, Jesus did many other signs in the presence of his disciples," which are now written in this book. "But these are written, that you may believe that Jesus is the Christ, the Son of God, and that believing, you may have life in his name." John, chapter 20, verses 30 to 31. John is saying, "I have written these things down in this Gospel, so that you may believe." Believe in what? That Jesus is the Christ, the Son of God, and that believing, you may have life in his name. John is very, very clear why he wrote it. And why he wrote it will also determine how he wrote it, who he wrote it for. It is clear that John, in the latter years, was based at Ephesus. So he was amongst Greek-speaking people. And he wrote his Gospel in Greek. And you know that John didn't write it in his native Aramaic or Hebrew. You know that because he keeps making reference to the Jews. It was the Jews' festival. It was the Jews' this. It was the Jews' that. So it's clear to you that the people he was writing to were not necessarily Jews. So all those pieces of information are important. If you come across a passage you don't understand, that wider context can help you understand better. Good. So what we're going to do now is we're going to do a little exercise. We're going to do a little exercise. We're going to try and discern the speaker's intent in this particular passage. Jeremiah, chapter 29, verse 11, and this is from the NIV. It says, "For I know the plans I have for you, declares the Lord, plans to prosper you and not to harm you, plans to give you hope and a future." Jeremiah 29, verse 11. And so the first question is, what kind of a statement is this? What was the purpose for saying what the Lord said? Is this simply a declaration? In other words, just a statement? Stating of the facts? Was the Lord making a promise? Is this a question? Was he just expressing his feelings? Or was he giving a commandment or an instruction? So we're going to go around the room and see what responses we get. Okay, so I'll come to you, Bishop, first of all. What do you think is going on here? What would you say? What type of expression is this? Bishop, you'll need to unmute yourself. Okay, maybe Bishop will wait for Bishop. Let me come to you, Shiloh. What do you think about that statement?
I'm trying. I know you, I heard you say the statement. Can you repeat it again?
Okay, so can you see the screen or not?
No, I don't know. That's what I'm trying. I don't know. Something's funny is going to return to the top. Okay. Return to the top. Yeah, okay. Now I can see. Yeah. Okay.
So we've got a passage here.
Yeah, yeah, I've seen it now.
Okay, good. So Jeremiah 29, verse 11. And what we're trying to do is we're trying to see what exactly was God trying to put across? Was he just making a declaration? Was he just stating the fact? You know, for example, somebody might say, it's raining, or it's a sunny day, just stating a fact. Or somebody might be, make a promise, or question, or express their feeling. For example, somebody says, I like you, or I love you, or I hate you, or I'm angry with you. You know, they're expressing their feelings. Or is it an instruction or a command? What would you say? So this verse, "I know the plans I have for you, declares the Lord, plans to prosper you, not to harm you, plans to give you hope and a future."
Well, what is coming to me is that he is stating a fact. He's telling me what there is. It's a fact. What it is, what is there for me. I don't know whether I can link the fact as a promise as well, but I'm something that is there, something that is an entitlement.
Okay, good, good. Thank you for that. Let's see. Irene, what would you say? Honorable class, perfect.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. I feel as, like, I think it's an expression of thoughts, feelings, and, yeah, that's how I.
Okay, so that's how you see it. Okay, good. I'll come to you, Brocco. What do you think?
I just joined. So let's proceed for a while, then I'll be able to get in properly.
Okay, no problem, no problem. Okay, let's see who else is here. Abba, are you able to help us? What do you think?
Good evening. I'm still, I'm still trying to.
To work it out.
I don't know why, but it's like, it's just confused me. I don't know.
Normally, I'm sure you know the, I'm sure you know the Scripture. So when you read it, or in the past when you've read it, did you treat it as a, God is commanding me to do something? Or did you treat it as, oh, this is a promise I'm going to believe in? Or you know, what, how did you regard it?
No, okay. I regard it as a promise I have to believe in.
Okay, okay. So that's basically what I'm after. Because it's a verse that people are familiar with. So it's about how you've been interpreting it up to this point, really.
Yeah, yeah, but then at times, like you said, you know, no, I know that, yes, but sometimes when, like you say, you want to see something happen, okay, or when something bad happens, then is it because, is it from God? Because he says, he doesn't have evil plans, you know, for you. So it's confusing.
Okay, no, that's very good. And that's really the reason why we're doing this. You know, I know that this is a verse that many, many, many Christians are familiar with and use it very often because it's a very nice verse. Let's be honest. It's a very nice verse. I mean, God says, I know the plans I have for you. I know the thoughts I think towards you. And yeah, so you know, everybody, you know, likes that. Oh, Alex, you've got your hand up. Please, please help us.
Yes, Doc, I see a pack of information in that verse. And it's a combination of a statement, promise, expression of thoughts, feelings, and intent, all put together. Now, he put that statement, and out of that statement, you see promise made to draw the attention to his thoughts and feelings, for them to also, although being in captivity, feel the same, that he has not abandoned them. But then it is also instructive because he wants them to do something. When you look at the context, there is something he wants them to do. There is something he wants them to do, to remain there and to marry and give birth and grow and all that. And to pray for the peace of the, of the nation that he had been in. Indicate that he's giving them certain instructions. You will, you're going off track. No, stay here and do A, B, C. Because that's what I, I think about you. So to, to bring them some feeling, again, to bring them to the point of some directives that he's giving. So that eventually, when you look at the next verse, then shall you pray and I will hear you here. So when you've done this. So in- instructively, he's telling them, this is my statement, this is my promise, this is my feeling about all these. But then I want you to be there and do this, A, B, C. That's my thought. Thank you.
Wonderful, wonderful. You've already, you've, in fact, you've finished the Bible study. You've, you've summed up all that we're going to be talking about today. Because what you've done is you've gone into the context. You've looked at the pretext. In other words, the words, the verses preceding the verse that we are looking at. And you've also looked at the post-text with the, the verses, you know, following. And because of that, you've got an overview. You now understand God's mind in this particular passage. And so we're going to do, we're going to essentially, um, let me, let me take you to Bible Gateway. We're going to read Jeremiah. Chapter twenty nine together. Okay. So this is BibleGateway.com. I highly recommend if you haven't used this, um, before, then please. Please do. I encourage you, BibleGateway.com. This is the text, oh, sorry, this is the text of the letter that the prophet Jeremiah sent from Jerusalem. To the surviving elders among the exiles and to the priests, the prophets. And all the other people that Nebuchadnezzar had carried into exile from Jerusalem to Babylon. Okay, so the first thing to note here is that Jeremiah, chapter twenty nine, in a sense, it's a standalone letter. Jeremiah's prophecy is not necessarily chronological, but you get distinct sections. That are, if you like, standalone, because this was a letter that Jeremiah wrote to whom. Not to the Israelites that were left in Judah at the time, but to those who had been carried off into exile in Babylon. And that's what Alex was alluding to. Nebuchadnezzar had come and had taken the king. With his household. He had also taken the nobleman, the kings, the prophet, the prophets, priests, carried all of them. Remember, Daniel was from the king's household. He was also carried. So in fact, it's actually thought that this was after the second time, because he did that twice, and then finally he came and destroyed the place. So after a second time, this is when Jeremiah wrote his letter to them. The people are in exile. Jeremiah writes them. Why does Jeremiah write? To know that you'll need to go to Jeremiah, chapter twenty seven and chapter twenty eight, to understand what was going on. But generally, the, the people that had been left behind in the nation. Who were not serving God, and were false prophets amongst them, telling them that this captivity is not going to last very long. It will soon be over. Don't believe Jeremiah, what he's saying. And so the people that were in exile would have thought, oh, we are only here temporarily. And we will soon return. Now, they were actually, they were actual prophets like Hananiah, which actually went and said, look, in two years. I declare, now today we hear these kind of statements, I declare and I declare, people making declarations all the time. They predict who's going to be president, they predict who's going to be this, who's going to be that. And people think that once someone makes a bold declaration, somehow they are speaking in the name of the Lord. People were doing this back then. In fact, one of these guys, he prophesied so spectacularly, like Jeremiah said, eh, may it come to pass, as you have said. However, this is what the Lord is saying to me, which is contrary to what you are saying. So that is the context. Jeremiah to, he wrote a letter to those that were in exile. To give them God's opinion. Don't listen to these guys that are telling you all sorts of stories, oh, this is what the Lord says. So let's carry on reading. This was after King Georgeine and the Queen Mother and the court officials and the leaders of Judah and Jerusalem. The skilled workers and artisans had gone into exile from Jerusalem. Context, historical context, what was going on at the time. What we do is we go, we airlift a verse and then we go straight to application. But there is, this was a letter written to actual pe- people, and God was addressing their issue. He says, he entrusted the letter to Elasa, or Ela- Elasa, or Elasa, son of Shafan. And to Gemaraiah, son of Hilkiah, whom Zedekiah, king of Judah, sent to King Nebuchadnezzar in Babylon. So you've got a king left in Judah. He was a, a puppet king put in by Nebuchadnezzar. Jeremiah was there in Judah with him. But the king had these messengers that he sent out to Nebuchadnezzar. And on the way, Jeremiah handed a letter. Take this letter to the exiles. This is what, so this is the message in the letter. This is what the Lord Almighty, the God of Israel, says to all those I carried into exile. From Jerusalem to Babylon. Build houses and settle down. So the false prophets say, say, in two years, your captivity is over. I want you to just picture yourself, you're sitting in church. Somebody is prophesying one thing, another person says, eh, this thing is over. Then the Lord says, who are you going to listen to? Who are you going to listen to? Now, churches these days, it's all about, it shall be well with you. Now, we all want to enjoy prosperity of the Lord. We all want to enjoy the blessings of the Lord. But I don't want someone to give me false promises. And I don't want to put my hope in false promises. I want what's actually written, forensically examined, meticulously interpreted. And judiciously applied to my life. That's what I want, because that's what's going to give me consistent results. These ones where they proclaim and we feel good, one year later you go and check, nothing has happened. Nothing has happened. The guy has to now come and give you new lies. Give you new explanations why it didn't happen that way. Okay, let's carry on. The Lord says, marry and have sons and daughters. Find wives for your sons and give your daughters in marriage, so that they too may have sons and daughters. Increase in number there. Do not decrease. Also, seek the peace and prosperity of the city to which I have carried you into exile. Pray to the Lord for it, because if it prospers, you too will prosper. Yes, this is what the Lord Almighty, the God of Israel says. Do not let the prophets and diviners among you deceive you. Do not listen to the dreams you encouraged them to have. I love the way he put it. He said, don't believe in the dreams that you, 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 you are the one that encouraged them to have those dreams. You see, the prophet that comes to you with his visions. He's not just, he didn't just magic those visions. He didn't just, you know, pull them out of nowhere. Your itching ears is the fuel. Is the mechanism. It's your itching ears, your willingness to listen to him that fuels him. He will lose his visions if he didn't have an audience. In, in other words, you are part of the system empowering the false prophets. This is what God was saying to the people. Don't listen to the dreams you encourage them to have. They are prophesying lies to you. In my name, I have not sent them, declares the Lord. This is what the Lord says. When seventy years are completed for Babylon. I will come to you and fulfill my good promise to bring you back to this place. Have you seen what the Lord is saying? They're saying to you, two years, and it's over. Two years, that says the Lord, two years. And it's tingling your ears. But the Lord said, no, it's seventy. It's seventy because when I decided to send you into exile, it was not an impulsive act. I started prophesying to you about it two hundred years earlier. I sent Isaiah, I sent many other prophets to tell you about it and you didn't listen. I gave you a couple of hundreds ye- ye- years to, 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 to repent, and you didn't. So I have determined that you are going to serve Nebuchadnezzar for seventy years. So it will take you seventy years to humble yourself and for the land to rest. And then when the seventy years have passed, I will bring you back. Now, that word, that, that passage that we love so much, it follows. It says, for I know the plans I have for you, declares the Lord. Plans to prosper you and not to harm you. Plans to give you a hope and a future. Have you seen now? So this was not some random scripture that, you know, one day God woke up in the morning and said, I know the thoughts I have for you. It was set within a context. It was set within a context. First of all, don't listen to the false prophets. Because if you listen to them, you're going to miss what is being said. Number two, it's not two years, it's seventy. Number three, marry. Give your sons in, in my daughters in marriage. Multiply, because you are going to come back to occupy the land again. If you allow your numbers to dwindle, you will not be able to do that. So grow, multiply. Then, at the right time, I will bring you. Why? Because I know the thoughts that I have towards you. Even though you are going to spend seventy years in captivity. It has never been my intention to hurt you. It's never been my intention that you should suffer. Know the good thoughts that I have towards you. They are thoughts to build you up, to establish you, not to destroy you. But of course, your iniquity has brought this upon you. But even now, if you will listen to me, this says the Lord. I will bring you back to this land and fulfill my goodwill towards you. That is the proper interpretation of the scripture. But so far, we've only been looking at the pretext. We've only been looking at the text before the verse that we're looking at. So let's now look at the post-text. The Lord says, then you will call on me and come and pray to me. And I will listen to you. Have you seen that? So this is not some free-floating, ah, God say, you prosper me, hallelujah. God said, no. This prospering in verse eleven is set within a context of you were backsliders. You went into exile. You're going to stay in exile for seventy years. Then you're going to come back to the land. Then you will pray to me. You will call on me. Then he says the next, you will seek me and find me. When you seek me with all your heart. I will be found by you, declares the Lord, and will bring you back from captivity. So he will gather you from all the nations and places where I have banished you, declares the Lord. And will bring you back to the place from which I carried you into exile. Have you seen the proper context of that whole passage? If we go step by step from reading to proper interpretation. Before we ever get to application, you can see that that forces us to be cautious with our application. Why? Because this letter was written to those that were in exile, even the ones that remained behind. And those, those Jews that were still in Jerusalem, they could not claim these promises. The Jews that were in Jerusalem, even though they were together with Jeremiah, a letter wasn't for them. It was sent to the ones there. So when you and I then take up the Bible, and then we say, hey, that is mine. Are we not jumping to conclusion? If even those who were present at the time couldn't jump to conclusion that it was theirs. There is a proper way to apply scripture. Am I suggesting that this scripture can never be applied to the believer? No. You can still apply it, but there's a proper way to apply it. And the proper way to apply it is first of all, be meticulous with the interpretation. Understand the context properly. Now that you understood the context, you know that there were conditions put in place for what God was saying. He didn't just throw promises out there like some lottery tickets. He, he said something and he tied it to a set of conditions. If you and I want to profit from this scripture, we are going to do more than just read it and claim it. We're going to have to meditate on that scripture. Then let the Holy Spirit link this scripture to other scriptures in the Bible, because there are other places in the Bible. Where God essentially promises to take care of us, I'll never leave you, not forsake you. So there are ways in which you can still benefit from this scripture. But it is not to airlift it like that from the scripture, from the, from the, the, the passage. And just say, God said this, and the Lord has promised me this. And he didn't make a direct promise to you. In this particular passage. He made, in fact, to answer the question fully. It is, if you look at within a wider context, it's a prof- a promise, a conditional promise. It's not an absolute promise. It's not an oath where the Lord says it will happen no matter what. You will find me if you seek me with all your heart. He gave them conditions. So within the wider context, it's a promise. On its own, it's just a statement of intent. He says, I know the thoughts that I have towards you. I know, I know the thoughts I have towards you. If the Lord had stopped there, if he had said nothing before, nothing after, it would have just been a statement of intent. I know the thoughts I have towards you. But you couldn't take that to the bank. Because if I say to someone, I know, I know the thoughts I have towards you, what does that mean? Does that mean I've committed to giving that person something? No. Does that mean I've promised to do something for that person? No, I'm just telling you that I have these wonderful thoughts. But thoughts must be translated into action. So if somebody tells you that they have this wonderful thought, the next thing will be, ah, okay, so when are you going to enact those thoughts? So as a standalone passage, as a standalone verse, God doesn't promise you nothing. He hasn't promised me anything. In its context, yes. When you take the full context, yes, it's a conditional promise. So, to round up. The proper interpretation of scripture involves knowing the context. The historical context. Who were the words addressed to? The original recipients of the words. Sometimes you have to ask yourself, how did the original recipients understand the word in the first place? Did they understand it the way I'm understanding it? Because sometimes we read our own ideas into the scripture. So sometimes we have to ask that question. But the historical context. But the historical context, who was the letter addressed to? Who were the words addressed to? What was the intent behind what was said? Read the pretext, read the posttext, and then it will become clear exactly what God meant. So I will stop here. We're lying without, learn, you know, originally agreed plan to, to, to wrap this, start wrapping this thing up at, um, half past. We're going to have ten minutes of, um, let me get my charger. Ten minutes of, you know, question time, contributions. So if you have a question, please feel free to raise your hand. If you have a contribution, a statement, observation, please also do the same. Okay, so somebody's raised their hand, let me check. Um, okay, so Frank, please, yes, please go ahead.
Yeah, dog, thank you. Good evening.
Evening, evening.
In fact, um, thank you, um, I've been following proceedings through the beginning and in conclusion from the scripture that we read from Jeremiah, chapter twenty-nine.
Yep.
As you said, we, 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 we just take the sweetest portion of a certain scripture. And we base on it and we think that is the end. Um, before I come to that, when we read something from Revelation chapter twelve, verse eleven, it says that envy overcame him by the blood and by the word of their testimony. If you realize, most pastors end it. But the continuing thing is that, and they love not their lives unto death.
Yep.
Yeah, which we cut it short before get who is me addressed to, the context, everything. So we just pick certain portions of scripture and we base on it without going deeper. Um, when you were reading, um, the place that catch my attention, aside the context, who it was written to and those things, is that I'm being made aware that our God is a conditional God. Our God is a covenant God. If you do this, I will do this. But we are in exile for seventy years. The probability that you exceed the seventy years is because there are certain conditions stated as that we are not obeying. With regards to current dispensa- dispensation, what I relate from the verses um, six downwards is that you shall give your sons to your, your daughters to marriage. And you shall find wives for your sons. Doctor, please, I wanted to find out, is that what is happening currently? If it's not happening, is it because you are going against scripture? That's why most Christian marriages are not holding these days. What is happening? That is my question there, that caught my attention.
So it said, marry and have sons and daughters, find wives for your wives, for, for your sons and give your daughters in marriage. So that they too may have sons and daughters. So your question is that, is that it's not happening, that people are not getting married, is that, is that the question?
We, we step out and go and bring our own wives and come and show them to our parents. But the scripture says, find wives for your sons.
Ah, okay, okay.
That is where I'm coming from. Is it because we are not doing, what we are doing is contrary to the scripture? That is why we suffer or most suffer in marriages.
That's a very interesting point, but if, this is a, it's a, it's a deep question that I think deserves its own Bible study. You know, it's, it's a deep, I'm going to make a note of it and I'm definitely going to bring it back for discussion. But I would like us to sort of stay within the, um, the, the, the theme. And also because we don't have a lot of time, I'm going to give other people opportunities, but I am going to make a note of it. You know, you, you know me, I don't, I don't drop these things. Uh, it's a very, very potent observation that you made. But I would like us to set a good scene on, you know, and then, and then we'll, we'll have a more, a, a longer discussion. Is that okay?
Sure, that's fine.
Okay, good. Thank you for that. Thank you. Okay, let's see, someone else is, um, yes, Broco, please feel free.
Eh, I think that, let's, let's put it this way. As a father, you live with your children. And you give conditions and expect that, um, those conditions should be abided. Now, for the children who do what is right, every promise that you have given them, you fulfill it. Therefore, if God gives a condition and you don't go by it and you live your life according to your own details, then those promises, even though they are written boldly, it can never be yours. So that is what I think from what we have discussed.
Understand. So basically you are saying if you don't, you know, adhere to the conditions that God has set out, then you, you can't expect to reap his blessings.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. That's a good summary of the, of the passage. Yes, any other contributions? Please feel free to unmute yourselves. So, um, let's see, Evelyn, would you like to share something? Your, anything you benefited from the passage?
Hello, good evening.
Good evening, good evening. You're welcome.
Thank you so much, Doc. Um, what's, um, um, is like, is conditions, just like the Bible says. He says, when you serve, you will bless. So do this and the blessings of the Lord will be upon you. So, um, that's the least I can say now.
Okay, good. Thank you, thank you. Thank you for your contribution. Okay, Bishop, we came to you earlier, but you were not, um, able to join at that time. Do you have a contribution now, any old questions?
Yeah, oh, a little contribution, um,
Yep.
About the, about the scripture that says, um, let me go to Jeremiah. Okay, hold on, I'm, I'm trying to open my Bible.
Okay, no problem.
All right, so Jeremiah twenty, twenty-nine, ten says, for, that says the Lord, when seventy years are completed, that's, that's it. So what is, what is God trying to tell us here? He has his own plan for our lives. So sometimes we, we, we shouldn't be, um, we shouldn't blame God or be too worried when things doesn't go our, our way, the way we want. Because God has a plan for us, because when you look at the way he told, uh, Jeremiah that, look, after seventy years, whatever, if you like it or not, I say after seven, seventy years, then you can call on me. And it's, and sometimes we have to know that, eh, eh, God fixing us is not just a day. It takes time to, you know, grow us spiritually. You, you, you can't say when you are born today, tomorrow you'll be seventy years and then you, you are done. No. It takes you through a process. So sometimes we have to exercise a bit, you know, a little bit of patience. Yes, and when we pray, we should know that God has a plan for us. So we, we, we shouldn't be too much in expectation that we, we, we feel that God has disappointed and, and, and you know, when you read James twelve, one, it says that, so don't try to get out of anything prematurely. Let it do its work, so you become mature and well-developed. That's what James, James said in James one, two, to four, yes. No, don't, don't be hard to get out of any experiences. Sometimes when we have one experience, we think, oh, eh, why, no, 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 that experience is going to build you up. That experience is going to draw you closer to God and you will understand him better. So when we understand the plan of God, it makes Christianity very easy. But when we don't understand the plan of God for our lives, that is where we fight, we fight it. We live, we live in a prison of denial, you understand? So we have to understand the, the, the plan of God. We pray that God, what do you mean by this scripture? What's happening? So we, we need to ask questions. When we read the Bible, ask questions, why? What, when was it? What, what, you know, so we can have answers. So we need to ask ourselves, when we read the Bible, when did this happen? What if, what is this? You know, when we start, we start doing that, we'll get answers.
Amen.
That, that, that's a little I can say, yeah.
Amen, amen, very powerful.
Thank you.
Amen, that's very powerful. Basically, what you said is so important because you see, if you approach the Bible as a book, a reference book for answers. You know, I have a question, I have problems. I need, I need money, I need this, I need that. Okay, let me look for the verse that speaks to my situation. I need healing. Let me look for the verse that speaks to my situation. That's how some people approach the Bible. It's not bad, but that's not the best use of the book. You see, the best use of this book is that the word would dwell in you. That you interact with the word like it's your friend. That at any one time you're brooding something that you read some time back. And that word feeds your mind, your thought processes and changes your thinking. And as it changes your thinking, solutions emerge. So you're, you're looking for, you, you've got a problem, you need an answer. And you haven't even got a Bible in front of you, but the answer pops out because the Bible you've stored in your head already, that you've chewed upon, that you've, that's practically become part of you. That internal Bible begins to educate you, begins to tell you, direct you to the answers that you are looking for. When our lives are all about, God sought me out, God, I need this, sought me out. Your prayers like that, and even your reading of the Bible will be like that. So many people that they are reading of the Bible is all about looking for something to sort themselves out. But if you lay that very transactional approach, lay that aside and see the Bible as a book designed to instruct you, educate you, transform you, that's when you really begin to benefit. I'm saying this from experience because for many years, the Bible was just like a reference book that I went to. I read it very, every day, very frequently, but I wasn't, it wasn't part of me. I could quote it, I could recite it, but it wasn't part of me. But when I changed that approach to say, you know what, God, I'm not looking for a promise. I'm not looking for a quick fix from this passage. I'm not looking for you to make give me goosebumps. I just want to understand what this passage is saying. And I want to understand, use this passage to educate me, to bless me. Use this passage to open my mind. When you approach the word of God like that, it will, everything will change. The way you understand it will change. You will know, and then, and then your prayer will change. Instead of praying in desperation for something to happen, you pray according to the will of God. There's a difference. Where even before you open your mouth, you know it's done. It's done. There are many prayers that I've made that even before I finished, I knew it was done. I didn't even go and check whether it was done because I knew it was done. Praying according to the will of God. Whereas, when all you're doing is just airlifting some passages from the Bible and that, you know what's going to happen? You'll be on your knees, you will pray, you will fast, you gather people, you do, and still you're not seeing any result. God is on our side, he's not against us, but we need to get on his side. That's the thing, he's on our side, but we need to get on his side. Start thinking the way he thinks, start seeing things the way he sees them. We've run out of time, so I think we're going to finish. Thank you all very much for joining. Let's spend just a couple of minutes to just thank the Lord for bringing us together to share the word and for opening this word to us. And, um, maybe, um, I'll ask you Shiloh to, to pray for us just to finish, um, the Bible study.
Can we pray? Father, we thank you for such a session. We are grateful of Godfather that you've guided us once, us once again. And with your spirit of God have taught us. We say at this moment to God, the spirit that teaches all things, let it dwell richly with, upon us. Let us remind us of what you have taught. Father, let us lead us onto places that you want us to search, because you are the one that teaches us all things. We commit ourselves again into your hands, oh God, and we pray that Father, let your power, that distinct your children, fall upon us, fall upon everything. Fall also upon our teacher. And Father, speak him to him in diverse way that he will meet the need of your children. Father, let your hands also be upon everything that we touch, everywhere that we walk. Father, that we will bright as a light that you said we are to this world. Your name be glorified now and forevermore in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
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 God bless you all and have a wonderful week. We'll meet again by God's grace next week. Thank you all for joining.